So, without you guys, please do that. On favor? Aye. Our minutes of October 28th are approved. All right, so let me just explain how our meetings operate. First item of business is a public hearing, and that is the application that this board has already had an opportunity to review, and now we've noticed the neighbors, so we want to hear from neighbors if there's any concerns we should be aware of. The last two items on our agenda are both discussion items. One, we did start the discussion on last month, and, you know, we needed to do some additional work on it. And then one, we're on new applications. So, I do just want to remind everybody that the reason you're all here is because what you are looking for is not in compliance with the town code.
And so, it's our job to evaluate what your request is, what the hardship is, why you need these, why you need the appeal that you're asking for, and for us to make a decision based on that. Ah, and Rocco has joined us. So, with that being said, I'm going to start with item number one, Appeal 4150, Adam Smith, 23 Glen's Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 16-foot by 36-foot in-ground pool, a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed patio, and a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed 9-foot by 16 or 144-square-foot shed while pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let me just start with this one by saying that Mr. Smith or somebody from his family called the office today, and he unfortunately had a medical emergency and was rushed into surgery today, so he is not able to join us today. However, the public hearing was noticed, and in the event we have any neighbors that are here, we do want to acknowledge that and listen to them. We can still potentially work on this, we just might not be able to get answers if they're needed. So, you know, so with that in mind, just, you know, the applicant himself is not here. So, I just want to review some of the information that we were able to collect from him last month. He said his kids have been taking swimming lessons, that they have now asked to have a pool, he's got lots of screening on, tree screening on the yard there, he's asking for a 16-foot by 36-foot pool, which is not an oversized pool by any means, and a 16-foot by 9-foot shed, which he said he wanted the 16-foot side to coincide with the end of the pool, the width of the pool. The applicant said he has planted over 150 arborvitae since he's on both sides for screening since he's lived there. The property drops down from the road, so which limits where he can put the pool, and he's got a septic in the back. So, he said the property is a ramba-shaped or a nod-shaped property. So, the front of the shed is going to be more than 10-foot from the property line, but the back is going to end up being a little bit closer. So, again, just based on the shape of the property. So, with those comments there, the board felt it was appropriate for us to notice this and to conduct a public hearing. So, are there any comments or questions from board members?
No, I'm good.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Adam Smith, 23 Glen's Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed 16-by-36-foot in-ground pool, a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed patio, and a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed 9-foot by 16-foot shed? Sure? If you don't mind, if you could come up to the microphone at the podium? Is there a sign-in? There's a thing there, so if we could ask you to sign in just so that we have, so just so we have your spelling of your name correct for our minutes? And then if you could just identify yourself and where you live for this board here? And thank you for coming out on a rainy evening. It's, I know it's not great traveling weather out there, but...
Took a while to get up here.
That's what Aziz walked in with two minutes to spare, so...
My name is Manuel, is this thing working?
It's on.
My name is Manuel Rose of 14 Mockingbird Court in Hopewell Junction. We've been living at this complex here since 1995, and we've slowly noticed the area overdeveloped. And one thing I was against of, we all did a petition, that Katie's Way development behind us that got built 20 years after ours, was in 1989, that was built in 2009, and it was supposed to be 24 homes, and the whole neighborhood fought against it and brought it down to 23. Okay, then they, they also promised we wouldn't see any homes, but we do see homes over there, especially one...
All right, excuse me, I need to limit your comments to what we're here for.
Now, now, they want to have an excessive-sized pool, which I think is excessive, 36 feet, and we just don't feel comfortable with that. And we want, keep some nature over there, and don't worry about bulldozers and all that, that's kind of right down, it's a very sharp slope. What if something happens and comes down? There's little children in the area. My next-door neighbor, he was against it, but I guess he didn't want to show up, I don't know, but I don't feel it's right. I feel it's excessive. I mean, it could go for a smaller pool, like a 24-foot, you know, it's, it's just too much, and I don't feel that we should have to give up any piece of our property, even if it's just a few feet, I mean...
I'm sorry, you're giving up a piece of your property?
I, I feel that way, you are. I mean, why do we get notified, all this because of this easement over here?
What easements? I'm not aware of an easement.
It says over here that our property is 250 feet of the above-mentioned property...
You're, you're within...
Within the 200...
Got the notice because it's within 250.
Yeah, yeah, so your, your property is within 250 feet, but they're not taking any of your property? So, are you, how close is your, how, where is your house in...
Well, I put the plans, because I don't know exactly how to read this.
Okay, so, if, if this property is at 23 Glen's Way, you're, you're on a different street, so...
14 Mockingbird, you want me to bring it up to you?
Does it show where your house is?
I almost opened, this is the house, it's not even on the surface.
Dana Sates, Mockingbird, okay, all right, so...
I'm going to look at the site.
Okay, so this is your lot. Where is the lot that's...
Oh, his lot, I don't know. I'm assuming it's behind us, Katie's Way?
Okay, so, so they're way up the hill, you wouldn't see this...
We see the homes.
We see the homes.
Oh, I get that, but you would not see the pool that would be put in, or the patio, or...
Well, we're going to see construction equipment, bulldozers and all that in the backyard, which means they might tear down some trees, something like that. We've had issues with flooding, and now we've got other controls, I forgot again.
Okay, if you don't mind, back to the microphone, just so we can make sure we get your comments. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had issues with flooding in the backyard...
Okay.
And we had built this, what did you call that thing, a trench that we have? To, to, to prevent that, and now we feel that with all this extra construction coming in, we don't want to have flooded basements coming all over again. And what if one of those machines, it's a very steep hill, topples over, and there's little children, our new neighbors have little, little babies. My wife also wants to speak.
Okay, that's fine. Take your time.
My name is Anna...
If you don't mind, if you, if you could write your name into, on this sheet, thank you.
My name is Anna Rose.
Okay.
Same address, 14 Mockingbird Court, Hopewell Junction. My concern is, I mean, as, as my husband said, we've been living at our residence since 95, and we've seen changes with all the construction that's been going on. And when you look at the back of our house out our window, we can see the construction all up on the top of the hill, and we can hear all the noise when they have loud parties or gatherings, we can hear that. Now, now you're talking...
Sorry, could you please let her speak? Thank you.
Now, you're talking about kind of bringing it out a little bit more for them to have this stuff built, and it's a shame that the, the owner isn't here so we can have maybe a poster or visualize where this is in relation to us, but you're on a slope, and like I said, one of the concerns is more and more of trees are being demolished, which you're talking more runoff possibly. And like my husband said, that's one thing that we would be very much concerned about. Needless to say, as he says, the equipment, because we heard it before, is now going to be even closer as it's digging for these items that the person is asking for. I just think somewhere along the line that you allow nature to be restored and not destroyed as all this construction is being proposed. I enjoy space, I don't want to really see my neighbor's building behind me, I enjoy the nature, and little by little, we've just seen it destroyed.
So, let me show you what we have from the applicant, so you can better understand how far away, if your property is behind his. So, this is his lot, okay? It runs, I don't know if I have any dimensions along here. For the length of it, I don't see that I do, but his, he's got 1.38 acres, okay, running here. Here's his house up front on Glen's Way, and the pool that he's proposing is all the way up front here, so it's on the, just, just to the side, just to the side and rear of his house. So, he still has all of this distance between his house and your property if you're back here on Mockingbird.
And we're going down, it's going to go down a slope.
Well, what he's, what he showed us by aerial is that it's all tree cover, and so he's not disturbing the trees, that's why he's proposing to put it where he's suggesting it should be, that it's, this is the better location for it.
It's a slope.
It's just, but again, he, he told us that he's got a slope on the property, and this is one of the flattest areas of his property for him to be able to use. So, he is trying to not disturb the earth as much as he can, he's already told us that he's already planted 150 arborvitae on his property to be able to enhance and bring nature back. So, I do believe that he is making a conscientious effort to be, to be a good steward of the earth, okay, in the, in that he is, has found the, really, the, the location on his property that would have minimal impact, okay? So, I just want you to make sure you're aware, if you're behind, there's a significant distance from where he's proposing to put this.
It doesn't look like that from our backyard.
Okay.
If you were back in our house, you would see what, we see homes, but we don't want to see a pool, we don't want a country club, we don't want a, I mean, this is in L.A.
Excuse me, can you just come to the mic? Because there are people on the Zoom, what, listening to this conversation?
Yes, please.
If, if you're going to speak, you need to be speaking at the microphone.
The other neighbors who are watching it on Zoom.
Oh. I forgot what I said.
I think you were disagreeing with the...
Yes, it's a very steep incline...
It's, it's more significant of an impact than you think.
Yes, it's going to be a big, significant impact, and like I said, we want the nature, there's children around, let them enjoy the nature, they're growing up, you're going to have bulldozers and all this equipment over here, what if some, one of these things topple over while they're building up there? It's a very steep slope, and no matter what he builds, if it's coming that close, we don't want to see it. We don't want to see the homes. In the summertime, we're okay because the leaves are there on the, on the trees, it's covered up, and now it's fall, now you see every home, and then they leave lights on at the middle of the night.
Okay, but you're not even sure that you're talking about this property?
I'm talking about all the property...
You're talking about the homes in general.
All these new homes that were built after us, and one of them is the one that wants to build that. I, I just don't want to see any more, we don't want to see any more.
Okay, thank you. I do want to read into the record that we do have a, a neighbor letter that we received actually last month, I found it in my folder from last month, and it's actually the neighbor who is most impacted, so this is a letter from the neighbor who is right next door.
That's 16?
It is 35 Glen's Way. So, if, I'm, please, I'm just going to read the letter. "I, Mr. Thomas and Mrs. Kristen Raffaelli, residing at 35 Glen's Way, and being duly sworn to pose and say, one, I am the owner of the property located at 35 Glen's Way, which is adjacent to the property located at 23 Glen's Way, Hopewell Junction, New York, 12533, owned by Mr. Adam and Mrs. Gabriella Smith. Two, I am aware of the proposed swimming pool patio amenities construction project at 23 Glen's Way. Three, I understand that the proposed construction may involve a variance, setback, reduction, or other deviations from standard regulations. Four, I have no objection to the construction of the swimming pool slash patio slash amenities as proposed." And this is dated, well, it was sworn to, or notarized on August 20th, 2025. So, just to read this letter into the record for board members to be aware. So, is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against the request from Adam Smith, 23 Glen's Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool, a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed patio, and a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Rocco, you want to... This is Appeal number 4150.
When will the applicant vote?
We're doing it right now.
Right now, we're going to read it. The applicant is Adam Smith. The project is as follows: a 15-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 16-by-36-foot in-ground pool, a 10-foot sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed patio, and a 10-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 9-by-16 feet, total 144 square foot shed. These are known as variances. Location is 23 Glen's Way in Hopewell Junction, and this resolution is being offered by zoning board member Rocco Lamitone, that's me, whereas the applicant is installing, is proposing to install a pool, and whereas the applicant has already installed additional screening by planting arborvitae trees, and whereas if the applicant placed a pool and patio in another location, then it would require the removal of natural screening, and whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on November 19th of 2025, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on November 25th of 2025, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of these variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, and there is existing screening. The desired result cannot be achieved by other means due to the location of the septic field, topography, and existing vegetative buffer. The variances could be deemed substantial, but the applicant selected the locations for the structures requiring, requiring the variances in order to preserve the natural screening. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Adam Smith for a 15-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 16-by-36-foot in-ground pool, a 10-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed patio, and a 10-foot sideline variance from the requi, from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 9-by-16 foot, total 144 square foot shed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries. All right. Thank you for coming out. All right, that's our only public hearing of the evening, so the other two applications are both just review or discussion. So, we're going to start with Appeal 4143, Robert Bertuzzi, 656 Beekman Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 389-square-foot variance for a proposed two-story detached garage with a 30-by-32 or 960-square-foot main floor and 600-square-foot unfinished second floor for a total size of 1,560 square feet. A variance for the garage to be located in the front yard and a 49-foot line variance, front line variance pursuant to Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Footprint of existing houses is 1,952 square feet.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, we had extensive discussion last month. I did tell Mr. Bertuzzi that I would go out and do a site visit, I did meet him at his house, and we discussed it, and I raised my concerns about it, I did, not only was I there that day, but I was actually, went by the neighborhood again yesterday...
Good.
And, and counted that there are at least, to his credit, there are at least four other properties in the immediate vicinity of his house that have garages in the front yards. So, I am quite considerate of that, however, one of them was one that you pointed out was, you know, look what I have to look at. So, you weren't even pleased that it was in that, in the front yard, with the comment that, look what I have to look at. We discussed multiple other options, we looked at his backyard, clearly it's, the backyard doesn't work, it's raised up and then it goes, you know, the topography, the slope of it goes down. We talked about putting it on the side of his house, he's got a beautiful patio, and it really wouldn't, the size that he's looking for wouldn't really fit there. We talked about putting it cat-a-corner... We talked about putting it cataquandered in the front, where we had talked last month about maybe with a breezeway over the patio connecting it, but there's really not enough square... there's not enough there to get the depth of a vehicle in there, okay? Even as it is now, the way he parks his truck, it's kind of cataquandered to be... and it's... yeah, the back of the truck, you know, to be able to get a structure around the end of the truck. So that wasn't an option. The one thing we left him thinking was me... that one idea, I think it was my husband who came with me, raised was how about extending your existing garage out? You were concerned about how that was going to look, but it would give you an option. I will say, there was not a... the only car that was in his existing garages was up on a lift, but the rest of the garage was full. So the family clearly needs more storage space, okay? So I'm not disagreeing with the need for a garage. Besides, his wife wants to park in the garage, so I... that means a lot.
I've got tonight, but...
So, you know, we talked about the fact that the tree cover that's in the front on Beekman Road is all pines. They're taller, and they're quite tall, actually.
About 65 feet.
Yeah, Mr. Bertuzzi said he wants to actually cut those all down because he's concerned about them falling down, and, you know, he'd have to cut some of them anyway just to be able to get the footings in and to be able to put the building in. He had a... I think your son used to have drew up a visual.
Oh, I have it on my phone.
He drew up a visual of what this would look like, and it's bold. It's right there as you're driving on Beekman Road, heading into town, coming from Beekman, with its white trim and its white doors on the garage and everything else. It was like, it's right there, you know? So I still have concerns about its placement. We talked about removing the second floor. Mr. Bertuzzi said that the only reason he was actually proposing a second floor was because the architect had told him, or the engineer had told him, that by having a second floor, it would eliminate the heat rising unnecessarily. It would actually save him some money heating the structure because it would limit its ability to go up. But he still is... needs at least 14 feet to be able to get the lift in and to have a functioning lift there.
That's what I have in my existing garage now, 14 feet.
Which means... right, I understood. Which means you don't need 25 feet, which is what we're asking for, but you did need something. So when we left that day, a couple weeks ago it was, we asked you to think about a couple things for when you came back. So this is your chance to now tell us what you thought about and what you're... now you think you're looking for.
I was going to eliminate the upstairs.
You're going to eliminate the...
The second floor for the footage? You said for the footage?
Right. You're so... But when you talk about eliminating the second floor, are you only talking about eliminating the floor, the boards, or are you actually going to bring the height of the building down?
Well, I would just eliminate the floor.
That's not really... we're getting at the fact that it's too tall. It's going to look like, as we said last month, it's going to look like a little house. I mean, it...
So the garage is going to be four feet lower than the existing garage now?
Sorry, you did... I did actually see that. So the... there's a slight rise as you go from Beekman Road up to his existing house and garage. And so he was able to show us that there is a... would be a four-foot drop.
My existing slab garage now, I shot the laser.
Right.
With a new garage floor, it's four foot lower.
But four feet is not truly significant, and it's still a large structure there. So that's why when we were talking about reducing the second floor, it was giving thought to reducing the height. Do you... I still don't... I still guess I'm still confused as to why you need a 25-foot height. And I know you said you wanted to match your existing house.
That's it.
But I don't think that's a good enough reason, honestly. I think, you know, if for us to consider this, because again, there are other garages in your front house. I made it a point of going out there and counting them because they're there, you know? And we've got to... you know, and you have other limitations on your property that limit your ability to put this anywhere else. So in your... that's in your favor.
Right.
But, you know, one of the things I said to you was those bright white doors, if they were dark...
Well, I can make the doors dark. That's not a problem.
You know, and the white trim and stuff like that.
I could make the trim the same color.
If it was darker, it would be less noticeable that it was there.
The trim, I could make it the same color as the siding. My son would just do it on the computer.
If you don't mind, if you could bring that so the other board members could see this diagram. Yeah, there's no Koopla.
I mean, it's nice looking, but it looks like another house.
It's very... it's very nice looking. There's no question about it.
I remember it's...
But it's right there.
Yeah.
And you can still see my neighbor's house in the back with the sign.
Yeah, it looks like a house. Looks nice.
Looks like a house.
It looks like a house in front of my house.
Looks like another house, yeah.
And that's why I said that the white doors were not white.
But I can make them gray. We were talking about making them gray.
Back to the microphone, please. Thank you for sharing that picture because that really is very helpful. But I guess the biggest question is, can we reduce the size of it? Can we... I know you want... can you eliminate the second floor?
So what if I brought it down like three feet more? So instead of 25, bring it down to 22 feet, plus the four foot from the house difference is going to be almost seven feet different than my garage now, lower than my garage now. So if I went 22 feet, I'm trying to maintain the pitch.
Do you need to have the dormers on the front of it? The dormers is what gives it the look that it looks like a second house.
So what if I left 25 feet, I get rid of the dormers? It's give and take.
This is...
We're negotiating now.
Let us be clear. It's up to you to tell this board what you want, and then we will make a decision on that. It's not up to us to tell you what... we're giving you guidance in terms of what we find is problematic, because as we've said to you before, what we allow on your house, somebody from somewhere else in town can say, but you let Mr. Bertuzzi have it, why can't I have it? And that's what we... that's part of our job, and I think that's probably the hardest part of this issue. I don't think anybody could disagree that your property limits where it can go. It couldn't go on the side. You know, the only place it could be would be in the front, which limits the use of your existing garage, so...
And you're on what, an acre, right?
A little over, a little over. Not much over. It's like 1 acre point 08, something like that.
And your neighbor immediately to the left, you said, is in support of this.
Yeah, I told him about it. He was...
Yeah, so...
Seemed good, and the woman to my... and on the right side.
And the woman to the right is actually on the next Albertana Court there, so they're not...
Yes.
They're not even on Beekman Road, so they're in a little different subdivision.
Right, and my neighbor's on... half his property's on Polkway.
But for us to go with it, take this further, to take it for a public hearing, we've got to tell your neighbors who are within 250 feet what it is that you're really looking for. They need to be able to see what it is that you're asking for. So that's why we were hoping you were going to have some... again, changing the color of the doors, it would help, reducing the height, I think, and eliminating the dormers, making it less look like a house and more look like a garage, I think would help.
Eliminate the dormers.
But it's... but wait, eliminate the dormers and it's still 25 feet?
Eliminate the dormers.
Or are we at 22 feet now?
And make it 22 feet, and then I'll put the Koopla on top.
And why do we need...
Get the Koopla.
The Koopla's going to add a couple feet.
There's going to be a deck on it, too.
Why do you...
I'm joking with the Koopla.
I know, I know.
Joking.
So I get it that you need 14 feet for the lift.
Right.
For the lift to be functional. I get that. And then you've got the joists and the girder for the roof. So is that the extra eight feet from 14 to 22 feet?
So if I do 22 feet, I'm eliminating three feet plus the four foot that it's already lower because of the slope of the property. It's going to actually be seven feet lower than my garage now.
It's still going to give you...
That's the visual impact.
Some storage. You're looking for some storage.
Well, then it would give me a little storage. I wouldn't put stairs going up there. I would probably just put a drop ladder.
Yeah, but it'd give you some.
Because I don't want to lose floor spa... I don't want to lose floor space.
So you're still talking about having a second floor?
Well, it wouldn't really be a second floor because it's... if I go 22 feet, I'm dropping to three feet. The upstairs in the peak might be... you might only have five feet in the peak.
Have a lift on one side of it. It's going to be... he's going to have full height.
No, you won't have full height.
No, he's going to make it loft.
It's going to be like this. It's going to be like this, and you're only going to have space right in the middle of that. If there was a fly, I could eliminate the floor, too, if you want me to eliminate the floor, eliminate it.
The 600 square foot second floor.
You still got to put column ties across.
With the pitch of the roof and drop in the roof.
Right.
You know, he's going to have maybe knee walls on the sides and not full standing.
No, you're not going to be able to... you're lucky if you can stand in the middle. You'd be lucky.
So it'll be more... it's just going to be storage more like...
At 22 feet.
Yeah.
You'd be... and again, I don't even know if I would... I would put a ladder if anything, because I don't want to lose space with stairs then.
All right, we also talked about plumbing because you said you...
So I almost... I think we got approval from the Board of Health already.
For what?
For the bathroom.
He wants to put a bathroom in the...
Just a toilet and a toilet and a sink, that's it.
I mean, I understand a sink. That makes sense.
Okay, a urinal.
What?
A urinal and a sink.
No.
And a water fountain.
I explained to you when I was out there, a 600 square foot second floor with a bathroom already in the building implies that you're going to make an accessory apartment in here. You're creating residential... the potential for residential space. Are bathrooms allowed in accessory structures? I guess they are, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like a pool house can have one, right?
Sure. Bathroom's on the bottom floor?
There won't be upstairs. You won't have room for a bathroom if I wanted to do it, but I'm not going to do it.
We already spent $6,500.
Yeah, well, that's $6,500 to the Board of Health I spent already. But that's you know that...
So what's the pleasure of the board here?
I was outside working on my car yesterday all day.
I know, there was a red Corvette outside your house.
And I must have went in the house about 10 times to go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Did anybody else have a chance to drive by there?
I didn't.
What do you guys think? I mean, on the one hand, I want to hear from their neighbors.
I hear what you are saying, and then when we're talking about... I understand what the bathroom area you've been working in a long time, but it does give the potential for another owner of the house to do something with it because it's already approved for that, so... which would be a great potential selling point as well. So I understand that as well. Your concerns about the height, I mean, it looks beautiful.
I agree.
In a sketch, it looks great. Maybe a smaller height, a smaller footprint would be less noticeable, less obtrusive. I don't know. More like a shed. I take it off the dormers.
I take the dormers off.
It would look more like a shed and come down a little bit. Maybe you could do a rendering of that for us to take a look at.
Well, I think your son could probably just remove the dormers.
We could take the dormers off, and I guess he can try to make it three feet lower, see what it's going to look like.
And change the color of the doors.
Because I understand what you're saying about the slope, because then when you lower it with the slope, it's going to be lower than the house. It's not going to look like a house. It's going to look a little bit less...
Right. Understand some...
Not that it doesn't look good.
Right. But one of the things that you brought to my attention was that there's actually a lot diagonally to the left as you're looking... their house is condemned, you told me. So again, the current owner does not necessarily tell me what the future of this house, of this structure is going to look like. That's what we have to think about as well, is when somebody doesn't take care of it as well as you take care of your property, what's it going to look like? Then you're going to have the same situation you have across the street now. So that's what we... that's part of the charge that this board has, is always not just looking at the current user, but the potential of what could happen. So again, you keep your... your property was very, very nicely maintained, you know, your patio, everything was beautiful out there. So I don't... I have no doubt at all that what you're looking to do would be quite nice, okay? Just...
I agree. I mean, if you can guarantee you're going to live forever and stay here.
I'm going to live at least 110. I'm 64 now. But anyways, you want me to... you want... I'll have my son lower it three feet, take the dormers off, and I'll make the doors darker.
Okay, so if it's 22 feet high, is the second floor still going to be 600 square feet?
No.
Well, you got to lose some on the knee wall.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. Because if we can reduce the ask, we might even be able to reduce one variance that's needed here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got 600 now. We'll have to look at the plans again and try to figure out how much of it is really going to be usable.
You probably maybe have 300 feet, maybe.
Okay, much... that probably eliminates the ability to be...
Maybe 300. And I'll be honest with you, 300 feet is just going to be in the middle because you go a little three feet.
Yeah, the 30 feet deep and 10 feet wide, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not going to be... and again, I could even eliminate that. But you're going to have to put... you got to put cross braces, right, to support the rafters?
Right.
So you got to do something.
All right, so if we eliminate the second floor...
If we eliminate the second floor, then the second variance...
Is not needed.
Hot variance.
Right, we've eliminated that.
It's just...
Which, by the way, guys, from the last month, we realized we forgot one variance that was needed in that... because this is outside the Hopewell hamlet. The structure has to be at least 100 feet from... on a county or state road, so that's why we had to add that in. It's supposed to be at least 100 feet in. So, all right, so if we eliminate... if you reduce the height, you're going to eliminate the dormers, change the color. Do I have a motion for public hearing?
Any discussion on the bathroom, or do you have an issue with that?
I'm... you guys...
Does anyone have an issue with that?
the dormers, change the color, you have a motion for public hearing.
Any discussion on the bathroom or do you have a question with that?
You're, you guys.
Does anyone have an issue with that?
I don't, I don't mind a sink at all.
It's, it's a half bath, so.
It's just going to be a toilet and a sink.
Okay, half bath, okay.
It's it, toilet's going to be.
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate it. Excuse me?
He's making a motion for the public hearing.
A motion, I have a motion.
He's making a motion to set the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion for a public hearing or motion?
Motion to advertise.
For a public hearing.
Second.
Art is second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so what we're going to do is, and next time we meet in January, we will conduct a public hearing, so you got to make sure your neighbors are aware of this.
I, I thought you guys sent letters out to everybody.
We do.
Okay, so do I need to talk to them too?
Well, if you, if you can get a letter from a neighbor that's in support of this, it would be helpful for us, okay?
So really just the one guy closest to me, him?
He's the most impacted neighbor, yes.
This, on this side?
That's your call. She'll get a note, she'll get a letter, you know.
I get one letter from him, from Pete.
Again, we can't tell you what to do, you really have to, it would be helpful if your neighbors are in support of this, okay?
Okay.
Jackie will tell you about your sign, you only need one on Beekman Road because you don't worry about the other, okay?
He redoes that rendering, if you can send that to me, that way Jackie will have it and I can also distribute it to everyone.
So I'll make it, I'll print it out and I'll give it to you?
Right.
Yes, please.
Scan it to me or something and.
Well, once it's all approved, then I got to go back to my architect.
With the different design, yeah.
And then he's going to have to redo everything.
Well, not everything, just as.
For the height.
The height, the height, I guess.
Height, take out the dormers, whatever we.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a problem, yeah. Dormers are easy anyway to eliminate.
All right.
All right.
So we'll see you in January.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care, you too.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Number three, Appeal 4151, Camille Rigio. We have a three-peat here. 2:30 Lake Walton Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance and a 50-foot size variance for a proposed 20-foot by 20-foot 400 square foot carport pursuant to Section 194-107D and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. This is the third accessory structure and it is over 350 square feet. Good evening, Brian.
What are the chances of me being the last application, the last meeting of the month for this client?
I can promise you, it's not, this is it.
This is it.
Didn't you say that last time?
We've done the carport before, but we.
All right, tell us what you're looking to do.
Just, we have, we'd like to put a carport up, just to shelter vehicles on site. The location where we're showing it, it's, there's an existing asphalt driveway that used to serve the residents to the north, it was cut off as part of the subdivision. So we do have that existing pavement.
Right.
Section that turn around there, so when you kind of place the carport over it, it fits really good 10 foot off the property line. We're here, we have a solid PVC fence that goes along the property line, which kind of shelters it from the neighbor. And then in the front, we have that exist, that pre-existing detached garage in the front. And that PVC fence actually kind of turns into the garage and has a gate on it, so, you know, visually as you're coming down Lake Walton, heading towards Stewart's, you know, you're really, you're probably just see the top of the carport, but you're not going to see, you know, any of the meat of the carport. The only time you'd probably see this is if you're driving toward the rail trail and you happen to glance over between the existing house and the detached garage and.
This, this property is wide open.
Wide open.
All right, I agree with you, if you're heading towards Stewart's, I agree with you, if you're, you know, that there, it's, it's, but if you're coming from the other direction, I mean, you can see the asphalt is there. So what this car, why a carport and not an actual garage, I think that's my.
It more spend money.
Okay, what's the carport going to look like?
It's just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, either let Brian answer for you or.
Let me tell you, is this the galvanized structure? It'll, it'll have, you know, concrete footings just for the poles come down to keep it from moving in high winds, but it's just a galvanized structure. It's open in the front, there's no garage door, the sides are open, so it's really just the covering on top, just to keep the weather.
Are you putting any landscaping in front of it? Or at least on the one side? Can we put some landscaping, just, I mean, not for nothing, but carports are not the most destructive structures.
To be honest, we didn't sort of.
I mean, even just some arborvitae's or something, something that the deer won't eat, but something that would actually just grow and provide a green, something to look at as you're driving toward the rail trail on Lake Walton Road? That would go a long way.
Boss isn't here, so that'll have to be.
I mean, you, you, you guys came in for the structure in the back, beautiful, okay? Your property is very well maintained, you know, you were very cooperative with us when you came in for the subdivision and we asked you to fix your garage and you did, so, you know, I appreciate all that you've done and how you maintain the property. I think it would go a long, like, like I said, there, as Beekman Road, there's a carport and it was, you just look at that and you're just like, it doesn't belong there, but you're far enough back that it wouldn't really be, it's not going to be what draws your attention, but it would really hide it well if you could put a couple of arborvitae's in front. You probably need five of them, you know, it's probably not a lot, maybe even three, you know?